Should Toronto City councillors get a raise?
Tonight, the debate over a big bump in leaders' salaries at Toronto City Hall. Residents react and the mayor weighs in. Good evening. The increase is significant, a 24% hike.
But councillors also haven't had a raise in their base pay in nearly 20 years. The proposal is generating a lot of discussions. CTV's Natalie Johnson is live at City Hall tonight with the story. Natalie?
Well, it is a political hot potato, Michelle, one that has been kicked down the road many times before, but Toronto City staff say now is the time to hike councillor salaries to be more in line with comparable cities, though the mayor says now is not the time for a big boost.
Inside Toronto City Hall, the 25 councillors who helped steer the ship will this week face the uncomfortable question of whether to boost their own salaries using taxpayer dollars.
I think they make enough money as it is.
If you have been getting a pay increase since 2006, that's kind of like a big issue.
You would hope that it would go up, but I guess that's true for everyone.
A political predicament for the elected officials who haven't had a base pay hike in nearly 20 years.
There's something about when elected officials get a raise, it brings out a lot of resentment.
But Toronto City staff have crunched the numbers and are recommending a 24% increase to Toronto councillor paychecks, hiking the current councillor salary of $137,000 a year to $170,000.
The pay increase is overdue. City councillors in Toronto are underpaid when you compare them to almost any other municipality in the GTA.
Councillors made $173,000 in Mississauga last year, $170,000 in Brampton, $161,000 in Markham, and $157,000 in Vaughan.
We want to keep and attract good people on council, talented people on council. So if we're going to attract from the, let's say, the private sector, we have to offer a salary that's competitive.
Mayor Olivia Chow, though, whose salary would not be affected...
It is too steep.
...not on board with these staff suggested increase.
These are hard economic times for everyone, and it's also uncertain times.
In the same way that we need to be fair with our employees, we need to be fair with everybody else across the city, to some degree, we also need to be somewhat fair to ourselves.
If approved, the increase would cost the city $957,000 this year. Councillor compensation, a million-dollar question.
Now, the size of each ward and by extension, the workload of each councillor doubled back in 2018 when Premier Ford halved the size of council. No change, though, at that point to councillor paychecks. That is one of the arguments we are expecting to hear when this very delicate debate unfolds at the council meeting that begins here tomorrow. Reporting live at City Hall, I'm Natalie Johnson. Nathan, over to you.
Thank you, Natalie. Still ahead, a family-owned coffee shop vandalized repeatedly. This series of incidents prompting fear and concern the multiple attacks are hate-motivated.
We turn to an intense fire that ripped through a townhouse complex under construction in Markham.
As you can see, the damage is extensive, estimated to be in the millions. CTV's Mike Walker joins us live from the scene near Old Kennedy Road and Alder Grove Drive. Mike?
Well, Nathan and Michelle, the cleanup is now underway. The townhomes destroyed in this fire look similar to this complex. And as you can see behind me, there's barely anything left. And investigators say they may never know the cause.
A block of four townhouses under construction reduced to charred debris. After flames tore through the complex late last night, Russell Rosos lives directly behind the construction site.
I started hearing some loud booms that were explosions, I guess, from propane tanks because they're distributed around the whole area.
He was alerted by a neighbour knocking on his door around 11:00 last night as the blaze broke out at the townhouse complex near Old Kennedy Road and Alder Grove Drive.
I opened the blinds and came to see the giant flames engulfing the property.
The fire was so intense, by the time crews arrived, it wasn't safe to enter the burning townhomes.
We lost the original block of four townhouses. We were able to protect six units still under construction on the north side and as many as 12 units on the west side.
All of the townhomes were unoccupied, and there were no injuries reported. There is also some damage to neighbouring townhomes that are also under construction.
We believe this fire may have been fed by some construction propane cylinders. That's what was reported to us from our first-in crews. And you can see with what's left of this structure, it may be difficult to determine what caused this fire.
Markham's fire chief says strong wind gusts carried the flames across the street, damaging hydro poles and lines, leaving more than 900 homes and businesses in the area without electricity for several hours.
There was a bunch of smoke, definitely, and there was like a couple houses here, right? And so we were just worried these houses would catch fire as well. There were like houses behind over there. And so it was really huge.
The spreading flames even threatened a church directly across the street, though crews were able to get it under control.
We limited the exposure damage to the church just to some flame impigment on the roof.
The wind was blowing hard enough to travel right across a good block over. And luckily, it didn't hit the residential areas, or that could have been very disastrous.
The fire chief estimates damage to the townhomes to be in excess of $5 million.
Investigators with the Office of the Fire Marshal spent the day assessing the scene, but won't be launching an investigation. That's because the lead investigator says the severity, due to the severity of the damage, determining the cause and origin will likely be impossible. Reporting live in Markham, I'm Mike Walker. Michelle, back to you.
Thank you, Mike. Also tonight, provinces to build affordable housing, cut the GST on new homes, and improve Canada's military. We follow the leaders on the campaign trail.
We have more news in a moment, but first, here's a look at the city. There's a live shot. We're still below seasonal, and the cooler weather is going to stick around for a few more days. There's also concern about freezing rain hitting the GTA this weekend. Lindsay Morrison is here with a look at the current conditions. Lindsay?
Yeah, Nathan, we're already talking about the weekend because of that potential could be a little bit dangerous in some parts of southern Ontario. Let's talk about right now. We've got some mixed precipitation happening around Kitchener, Waterloo, maybe some ice pellets, some measurable snow impacting the Bury area. And for us around the GTA, we have had some passing flurries, some rain showers, especially along the lakeshore there, but it's all very light stuff, not amounting to a whole lot. We do have some pretty breezy winds out of the west right now. That's making it feel cool out there. For example, it's only 1 degree this hour in Hamilton, London, zeroing Godrich below freezing in Owen Sound, and 3 degrees right now in Niagara Falls. We, too, in Toronto, at Pearson specifically, 3 degrees, 4 on the islands. We are expecting to slip below freezing tonight, and then it will be a bit of a chilly day tomorrow. So we're going to talk about that. And yes, that risk of freezing rain over the weekend coming up. For now, Nathan, back to you.
Thank you, Lindsay. The operators of a downtown coffee shop are speaking of following repeated break-ins at their business.
Their store was vandalized twice in the last couple of weeks, and they're concerned they are being targeted because of their faith. CTV's Sean Leithong joins us live from York Street with the story. Sean?
Well, Michelle and Nathan, the owners of this coffee shop are Jewish. You can see the door that has been broken behind me. It continues to be boarded up, the second time in just a week, with the culprits being caught on camera. All those things factored together, and more, lead these people to believe that they're being targeted.
In the early hours of Sunday morning, security footage shows a person standing outside a coffee shop on York Street, shielding their face from the camera, then using an object to break the front window before running off.
I do personally, unfortunately, believe that this may be hate motivated.
Margarita de Vorkina's family owns Goldstruck Coffee, a shop that's been the victim of not one but two incidents. This is different footage taken in the early morning of March 16th, one week earlier. A masked person breaking the glass and entering the shop.
Broke the door, broke the glass, came into the shop, stole several things, and left.
De Vorkina says that she thinks that this is hate motivated because their family is Jewish. They have locations in the Financial District, another in Yorkville, and are opening a third at Young and Carlton.
We have already finalized the lease, and we're starting renovations at the third location of our coffee shop. Unfortunately, shortly after we finalized the details, we discovered that overnight the premises were spray painted with the Star of David.
The Star of David seen here was marked in February before both attacks. De Vorkina says she believes it's a signal for hate motivated people to attack. And there's also this. This past week, at their Yorkville location, Goldstruck hosted a performance from Hebrew singer and artist Dina Levin, which was shared on social media. Inside the shop today, the door is once again boarded up, while staff are trying to make sense of this.
As a small business, we are having a hard time. And our employees, including me, we are not feeling okay in certain ways emotionally and mentally.
With the two attacks happening near the performance and after one of their locations was marked with a Star of David, De Vorkina says it's unlikely to be a coincidence.
We're feeling shocked. We would like to believe that our city can do much better than this.
Toronto Police say they are investigating the two incidents at this time, but the investigation is not being treated as hate motivated. So far, no arrests have been made. So beyond the two incidents at this location here and the other one not far at Young and Carlton, they say that there was another incident that happened just a year ago in March in 2024, when another window was broken. Reporting live, I'm Sean Leithong. Nathan, Michelle, send it back to you.
Thank you, Sean. Three people were taken to hospital this afternoon following a multi-vehicle crash in the city's West End. This happened just after 2:00 PM in the area of Queen and West Lodge Avenue, just east of Lansdowne. Three vehicles were involved, a police scout car, dump truck, and an SUV. Three people were taken to hospital with minor injuries. The cause of the crash is under investigation.
Toronto Police are investigating a stabbing downtown. Officers were called to the Lower Simcoe and Bremner area just before midnight. Paramedics say a man in his 50s was taken to hospital with serious but non-life-threatening injuries. Police are now searching for a male suspect who was wearing a black shirt and black hoodie.
There's new information tonight on a spike in the number of measles cases in Ontario.
The province's chief medical officer of health issued a letter linking the spread of infections to a gathering in New Brunswick last fall. CTV's Queens Park Bureau Chief Siobhan Morris has the details.
Ontario's mounting measles cases have origins in Atlantic Canada. That's the word from the province's chief medical officer of health in a memo sent to public health units earlier this month. In the March 7 note, Dr. Kieran Moore writes, "We've seen measles cases on the rise in southwestern Ontario, linking back to an exposure at a large gathering with guests from Mennonite communities in New Brunswick last fall." There is a common denominator among those who've been infected.
We really do see the overwhelming majority of cases of measles in unvaccinated individuals or in individuals that have received only one, not two, of the doses of vaccines.
With hundreds of unprotected Ontarians getting sick since October, Dr. Moore writes, "Measles is disproportionately affecting some Mennonite, Amish, and other Anabaptist communities due to a combination of under-immunization and exposure."
Right now, we're watching this virus exploit those pockets because it's so transmissible.
In the latest figures reported by Public Health Ontario last Thursday, 440 measles cases had been counted in the province since the start of the year. Almost all of them, 333, have been linked back to that New Brunswick gathering. Just under a quarter of those cases are in the Grand Erie Public Health Unit's backyard.
We haven't had a measles outbreak like this week in a very long time.
Their acting medical officer of health trying to spread the word that vaccines are the best protection.
Places of worship, schools, other community organizations, so any unvaccinated groups of persons and communities with lower vaccination rates, we absolutely try our best to engage.
The usual recommendation is that kids get their first MMR shot around their first birthday, but now, in Grand Erie and the southwestern Health Units area...
The recommendation is that the first dose of the vaccine can be given at 6 months to 1 year.
With the second shot as soon as possible after turning 1. Dr. Chang On says they've seen a little uptake on those revised guidelines.
I think we just need to continue getting the word out there that persons who are at high risk of infection can reveal themselves of this.
Siobhan Morris, CTV News.
Lawyers for the province say Ontario's new legislation on supervised consumption sites do not ban them, saying they're forced to close, but they're free to relocate. Now, the comments contradict previous statements from Health Minister Sylvia Jones, who had said no sites will open after the closure of 10 sites by April 1st. They were ordered closed under the Community Care and Recovery Act because they're within 200 meters of a school or daycare. The province's lawyers made the comments in court today as the Ford government faces a legal challenge from a group which runs a safe consumption site in Kensington Market. Meanwhile, Ontario's Health Ministry released a statement which reads, "Our government has been clear, we will not approve any new or relocating drug injection sites. People struggling with addiction challenges deserve more than a healthcare system that gives them tools to use illicit toxic drugs, and our focus will continue to be on connecting people to the treatment they need."
We turn now to the federal election, where affordability issues were front and center again on day three of the campaign.
The Conservatives spoke about housing and made an unexpected commitment on other existing programs. The Liberals announced big spending plans on defence. CTV's Colton Prale has the details.
On the east coast, an early shift in a campaign focused on affordability. Mark Carney's Liberals, the first to turn their attention to defence, promising new submarines, icebreakers, arrays for the armed forces, and the creation of drone capabilities to defend Arctic air and sea.
We will deliver an unprecedented acceleration of investment in our armed forces so that we can defend every inch of our sovereign territory.
Meanwhile, the Conservatives continued the pocketbook push, promising to remove the GST from new home sales up to $1.3 million, updating a pitch made in October which capped out at an even million. He also answered a longstanding question, promising to keep the existing federal dental care and childcare agreements in place.
While honoring the agreements on childcare with the provinces, we're going to give more freedom and flexibility to parents, providers, and provinces.
He did not say if the Conservatives would keep federal pharmacare agreements or if provinces without deals would be able to sign new ones. And while the NDP were also focused on housing issues, Jugmeet Singh found himself defending his party's poor polling and suggestions they could lose official party status.
There's massive challenges. I've got no illusions about that. There are some serious challenges that we're up against. I'm never going to back down. I'm never going to give up. You can ask me this question 100 times. I'm never going to back down. I'm never going to give up because I believe in what I'm fighting for.
Meanwhile, the bloc promised to fight against an east-west pipeline, saying for Quebecers, the answer is no. End of discussion. Colton Prale, CTV News, Ottawa.
All the party leaders were responding today to reports that agents with India's government organized support for Pierre Poliev's leadership bid in 2022, an outcome the Conservative leader says was fair and square. CTV's senior political correspondent, Mike Lacutelle, reports.
The Conservative leader was ready to talk about affordable homes, but questions persist about Pierre Poliev having his own house in order when it comes to foreign interference. CTV News has confirmed that India attempted to interfere in the 2022 Conservative leadership contest, which Poliev won. There's no indication the meddling affected the outcome of the race.
I won the leadership fair and square.
Cissus didn't share the information with Poliev because he refused to get the necessary security clearances to receive classified briefings on foreign interference in Canada, something his opponents seized on.
I find it downright irresponsible that the leader of the opposition, day after day, month after month, year after year, refuses to obtain his security clearance.
That, to me, disqualifies you as a prime minister candidate. It's not someone that we can trust to stand up to foreign interference.
Poliev defended his decision to not take briefings, saying it would hamper his abilities to hold the government to account.
So they bring me into a dark room, and they'll say, "We're going to give you a little bit of breadcrumbs of intel, and then we'll tell you, you can't talk about any of this stuff anymore."
However, the former National Security Advisor to Prime Minister Justin Trudeau says being briefed on foreign interference would not muzzle Poliev.
So, holding the government to account, you can do without revealing top-secret information or secret information. And he should be able to do both of those things.
Poliev insists he already has security clearance because he was a minister in the Harper government a decade ago. But security experts say that clearance could have expired by now. Mike Lacutelle, CTV News, Hamilton.
Canada's former housing minister has become at least the fifth Liberal MP to change their mind in recent weeks about not seeking reelection. Sean Fraser has confirmed he will be a candidate in his Nova Scotia riding for the April 28th vote. He says party leader Mark Carney personally asked him to return and promised to help him find a better balance between being an MP and a father. About three months ago, Fraser said he wouldn't be running again in order to spend more time with his family. He insists there is too much at stake in this election for him to be sitting on the sidelines.
Meanwhile, a Toronto City councillor will run for the Liberals in Ajax. Jennifer McKelvey has represented Scarborough Rouge Park since 2018 and served as deputy mayor in 2023. She will compete against local talk radio host Greg Brady, who is the Conservative candidate. The NDP has yet to announce a candidate in that riding. McKelvey's jump to federal politics comes after Liberal Mark Hollin said he would not seek reelection. Ajax has been held by the Liberals since 2015.
In the Gaza Strip, local health officials say Israeli strikes killed at least 23 Palestinians. The Israeli military resumed its campaign against Hamas a week ago, shattering a two-month ceasefire. Most of the territory's 2.3 million people have already been displaced by the fighting multiple times and are facing worsening shortages of food and water after Israel suspended aid deliveries earlier this month. Today, the Israeli army told residents in all northern border towns to evacuate, saying Palestinian rockets had been fired at Israel from the area.
The US says it reached deals today with Kiev and Moscow to pause their attacks at sea and against energy targets, but Russian strikes on other targets in Ukraine continue. There was a massive overnight drone attack on the Kharkiv region. It injured two people and damaged storage facilities. It happened hours before both sides agreed to the American proposal covering the Black Sea and strikes on energy facilities. Ukraine and Russia said they would rely on Washington to enforce the deals while expressing skepticism that the other side would abide by them. The Ukrainian president says the truce is effective immediately, but Volodymyr Zelensky warned that Moscow was already manipulating and distorting the accords.
The King's State visit to the Vatican's been postponed. Buckingham Palace says medical advice suggests Pope Francis would benefit from an extended period of rest. The parrot was released from hospital Sunday after battling double pneumonia. His medical team says it briefly considers stopping treatment and letting him go after a breathing crisis last month, but decided on an aggressive course that put his organs at risk. But he's now begun two months of recovery. The Royals were set to travel to the Vatican April 7th and meet Pope Francis the following day. The couple's state visit to Italy is set to continue, but the program might now be subject to changes.
NASA says it now knows the origin of a so-called cosmic tornado. An image of the phenomenon was captured by the James Webb Telescope. The cosmic tornado was formed by outflows produced by a nearby forming star. These outflows can extend for light years and create shock waves after moving through denser materials. The material heats to higher temps and then cools, emitting visible light and infrared wavelengths.
Coming up, a small but mighty way to showcase Canadian pride amid a trade war. How Toronto's Little Canada exhibit is supporting homegrown businesses.
So those winds we are experiencing right now will change from a westerly to a northwesterly direction, and that will send our temperature below freezing. Minus 2 is the forecast low overnight, wind chill minus 8. It'll be a chilly start to the day tomorrow, and then the battle of colder versus warmer air begins as we inch closer to the weekend, and that's going to contribute to our potential for some freezing rain. We'll have an early look at your weekend forecast coming up, and stay with us. We've got another full night of great shows for you right here on CTV.
A famous musician has made a lasting connection with a woman from London.
And CTV's Sean Irvine has the story of an advocate for people experiencing homelessness and addiction, a story that clearly resonated with a country music star.
At an encampment in London's Watson Park, a caring person answers the plea of a young man in need.
I'm not okay. I need shoes, anything.
What you are seeing play out is the compassionate response of Michelle Boazino of 519 Pursuit. If her face looks familiar, it's because she's spoken about her journey from addiction to recovery on CTV News. Over the past five years, Michelle has transitioned from living on the streets of London to helping those there today.
Do not suffer in silence. There are so many people who love you.
And those who love Michelle. You see, as it turns out, the man in the video is not homeless. He's a social media star in disguise.
I didn't need shoes. I was just trying to find someone who was going to be kind and help me.
What he said next brought Michelle, at work on her day off, to tears. The Jelly Roll fan was presented with VIP concert tickets.
You're going to the show tonight. You're going to meet him.
But what began with free concert tickets grew into a much larger surprise when Michelle arrived at the Jelly Roll concert. While blindfolded for the surprise, Michelle told the star her story.
Well, Jelly, I will have three years sober April 25th. I was a hardcore intravenous crystal meth user.
Touched, Jelly Roll, who's battled his own addictions, presented Michelle with the keys to a car. On Tuesday morning, Michelle's memory of the moment remains vivid as she accepts the car at London's Oakridge Ford.
You know, you see these things on Facebook and TikTok, and you see them on the news, and you just don't think that that could happen to you.
While the dealership, the social media star, and the music star all helped to place Michelle in the driver's seat, it was her friend and boss, Alison de Blair, who initially reached out online.
Michelle deserves the world, and the world deserves Michelle. What a dream.
A dream made possible by the donation of the extremely low-mileage used car.
Tried to help people get their new ride, but of course, you know, in this case, it's quite a different experience. It's such a touching story.
If you could stand in front of yourself at your darkest moment and say, "This day is coming," what do you think that would mean to that person?
It would mean everything, right? Just to be able to tell myself to like, hold on, that it's going to get better, that, you know, you're loved, and one day you're going to love yourself.
In London, Sean Irvin, CTV News.
How about that?
Let's get you caught up on the weather forecast, and it could be better today, I would say, especially when you're talking about the potential for flurries and rain, that sort of thing. Looking for some sunshine, I think.
Yeah, I think what's good to know is that eventually, we're going to get a lot of sunshine, a lot of double-digit warm weather. We just have to be patient.
We just have to be patient. You know, if we're lucky this week, there's one day that I have my eye on that's looking very pleasant, and I'll talk about it in the seven-day forecast, but we could get some sun as early as about this time tomorrow. Ahead of that, though, it's going to be mostly cloudy with the chance of flurries, maybe a few stray showers as well. Let me show you what it looked like a little earlier today. It has been a mostly cloudy day here in the GTA, and depending on where you're joining us from, maybe you encountered a burst of flurries on the roads, perhaps you've maybe had a few raindrops hitting you as you ventured to your home. Here's the thing, this looks a little more intense on the satellite and radar imagery than I think it actually is. This is some very light stuff around the GTA, where we're seeing maybe a little more in the way of intensity for some light snow is near Georgian Bay, over toward the Bury area. And I'll step aside here just so you can see that little flicker of pink and purple around Waterloo region and Brantford, some ice pellets perhaps there. So this is all thanks to a low-pressure system that is circulating, and with those west winds we've been experiencing today, some lake enhancement as well. So we're not completely done with that. High pressure is going to settle back in as we make our way through the day Thursday. We'll get there in just a moment on the forecast radar, but there's tomorrow morning potential for, again, maybe a few stray flurries. Nothing that's going to amount to any shoveling around the GTA. That's the good news. As the day goes on, a lot of that cloud cover is going to clear out, so we should enjoy some sunshine for your Wednesday late afternoon and early evening. That sunshine is going to return as we are waking up on Thursday morning. I do think we'll see a little bit of an increase in cloud as the day goes on, but should be a dry day, and it's going to be a mild day. In fact, Thursday's looking like our best day of the week. I'll show you the temperature in just a moment. Right now, it is 7 degrees in Windsor. It is 2 in Ottawa. Anywhere Muskoka and north, we are below freezing at this hour and will be through the night tonight. Also here in Toronto, we're forecasting an overnight low of minus 2 degrees, wind chill minus 8, feeling into the minus double digits in some areas like Peterborough, for example. Waking up tomorrow morning, yeah, the kids are probably going to want the winter hat, the winter gloves once again as they are venturing off to school by the afternoon. Generally, a little more comfortable, but still colder than normal. You know, our average daytime high now at this point in the month of March is about 7, and we've had several days warmer than that so far this month, but not tomorrow. It is going to be a bit of a cool 1, 2 degrees, our forecast high, that's it. And then Thursday, I mentioned the sunshine. If we're lucky, this temperature is going to climb even higher, maybe to 7, 8, 9 degrees. Into Friday, though, we're at about 4 degrees. We've got some showers in the forecast as early as Friday night, and then through Saturday and Sunday. We are looking at some unsettled weather with the risk of freezing rain, maybe some ice pellets mixing in, too. A reminder that freezing rain looks and feels like regular rain, but it does freeze on contact, so we're going to keep an eye on this forecast to see how things play out as we inch closer to Saturday and Sunday. That's the weather for now, though. Michelle, over to you.
Thanks, Lindsay. Also tonight, transforming scars. Specialty temporary tattoos tap to mask the signs of surgery, using art to help with healing. In health news tonight, a unique way to help people with permanent scarring and the ongoing reminder of surgical procedures.
A company began creating temporary tattoos to mask mastectomy and C-section scars. And as CTV's health reporter Pauline Chan reports, they're now finding a new they're now finding a new clientele.
So it's water with a cloth or something?
Yeah, just a wet washcloth.
You may have seen children applying temporary tattoos this way for fun. But for people who have large scars due to mastectomies or cesarean sections, the need to mask those scars can be even more important.
I have this scar across my tummy, and I've often thought about getting a tattoo, but I didn't like the idea of the permanency, and I didn't like the idea of the pain. And if you've ever had a scar, you'll know it's kind of numb, and it's kind of sensitive.
10 years ago, Denise O'Connell developed a line of specially shaped temporary tattoos to mask abdominal scars.
And it wasn't long before breast cancer survivors and pre-vivers found our product, because I didn't realize this, but breast reconstructions often take tissue from the tummy to build a breast.
The company, Tucked Tats, has sold products around the world as far as the Middle East and Australia. The designs, made of medical-grade materials, are a little edgy to hide not just the physical healing, but also help the psychological healing.
So it really helps, especially if you're outside and it's like you're going to the beach or you're shirtless, and there's double incision scars, especially if you want to, you don't want other people to know, because a lot of trans people right now are what they would call stealth.
Fitness trainer Miles Lala was interested in trying out the newest line of Tucked Tats, released last month, and specially designed for those who've gone through top surgery in the trans community. While he had keyhole surgery done, meaning he had no long incisions or scars, he understands the appeal of tattoos, both permanent and temporary.
My body is art for me. So it's an expression of myself, and I think that a lot of tattoos for me have a lot of meaning as well.
The tattoos last up to a week, depending on your body chemistry. You can find out more at tuckedats.com. Pauline Chan, CTV News.
Sad news from the entertainment industry. A controversial member of this city's music scene who helped in shape Canada's industry has died. Staples co-founded the alt-rock band Rough Trade with his friend Carol Pope in 1974. The band won four Junos and were inducted in Canada's Walk of Fame in 2023. The duo wrote about sexuality and politics, amongst other topics. Pope posted on Instagram, "Yesterday, my beautiful friend and Rough Trade co-creator Kevin Staples passed away. He was a bright light that will burn forever." Kevin Staples was 74.
North America's premier documentary film festival is returning, and as CTV's Andrea Case reports, Hot Docs is bringing the world to our screens.
Next month, Hot Docs, the Canadian international documentary festival, returns for its 32nd year. Heather Haynes is the director of programming.
Well, I'm really excited. We have 113 films this year. We had, we had close to 3,000 submissions. So the programming team did an incredible job in selecting the program. And this year, the opening night film is Parade, queer acts of love and resistance, and it's directed by Nam Gonik and produced by Justin Pimlo. And it's a Canadian film. It's with the NFP, and it really goes into the queer movement in Canada from the beginning up to modern day. And I think this film is incredibly important now as we see what's happening in the South and so many rights being taken away. So it's really good to highlight this story from a Canadian perspective as well.
Countries and territories from all over the world are represented, including the U.S., Latin America, Central America, Asia, Europe, and Africa.
This is the place where audiences can see a lot of films that don't get distribution, that are not getting picked up on, you know, broadcasters, streamers. And then we have the opportunity to bring the filmmakers to the audiences, to engage in deep conversations, as well as the audiences have the opportunity to meet the protagonists and participants in the film.
Haynes says at Hot Docs, which runs from April 24 to May 4, in cinemas across Toronto, you experience a deeper dive into what lies beneath the headlines, giving the audience a deeper story. Andrea Case, CTV News.
Suck to Sale is returning to Toronto with a new show called OVO, and CP24 Breakfast got a sneak peek this morning. The newest production explores the energetic life of bugs with acrobatic performances and music, of course. It premieres in Toronto in May in a first-of-its-kind pavilion being built along Lake Shore West.
The whole show is about bugs. We've got 53 of our world-class athletes, acrobats, that will be scarabs and spiders and, you know, dragonflies. So the story is quite simple. It's really how we go towards another, a story of love story, story of friendship. But throughout all of this, we've got three clowns weaving the story. We've got acrobatics both in the air, on the ground, a live band, a seven-piece band that will play live the entire show. We've got video projections, the large-scale production, and beautiful handmade costumes.
OVO premiered in Montreal back in 2009. It will be in Toronto from May 1 until June 28. Tickets are available online.
After the break, paved with good intentions but in desperate need of repair, CAA's Worst Roads campaign is on to hopefully drive change and make our streets safer.
Want to keep and attract good people on council.
Updating our top stories, a proposed 24% pay raise for Toronto city councillors is sparking debate. It means they would make over $170,000 a year. The mayor's salary would not be affected. But Olivia Chow is opposing the raise, saying these are hard economic times for everyone. There hasn't been a base pay hike for councillors in nearly 20 years.
I do personally, unfortunately, believe that this may be hate motivated.
The owners of three Toronto coffee shops believe they've been subject to vandalism because they're Jewish. They say it's also taking an emotional and mental toll. Police are investigating the incidents, but so far, they're not being treated as hate motivated. No arrests have been made.
You really do see the overwhelming majority of cases of measles in unvaccinated individuals or in individuals that have received only one, not two, of the doses of vaccines.
Ontario's top doctor has linked the increase in measles cases in southwestern Ontario to a large gathering of Mennonite communities in New Brunswick last fall. 440 measles cases had been counted in Ontario since the start of the year. More than 300 of them are connected to that gathering out east.
Remember to keep up to date, day and night, at ctvenewstoronto.ca and by downloading the CTV News app.
The prime minister says Ottawa is preparing for the worst ahead of Washington announcing new tariffs next month. BNN Bloomberg's Morella Fernandez has the details in tonight's business report.
Mark Carney says Canada doesn't want theater, but does want a serious negotiation about trade with the U.S. The new prime minister says his cabinet is in contact with White House officials, but Carney hasn't spoken with the American president since taking office, now more than 10 days ago. Eight days from now, Washington will reveal its list of retaliatory tariffs, and Canada is expecting to get hit again. Let's see how the markets ended the trading day. The Canadian dollar ended the day higher, pushing over the 70-cent U.S. mark. West Texas Intermediate is down to a flat 69. Our fix on Western Canadian Select has it up to 58.36, and not much movement on the TSX today. It gained 35 points. Those are your business headlines in the BNN Bloomberg newsroom. I'm Morella Fernandez.
The business report is brought to you by Canadian Western Bank, the bank built for business. Nominations for the CAA Worst Roads campaign are now open. The annual campaign gives Ontarians a chance to voice concerns about the bad roads in their communities. CAA says 85% of people in a recent survey reported being concerned about the state of the roads, while nearly half of respondents have experienced vehicle damage. Cracked pavement, potholes, and congestion were the most common complaints.
On our website, caaworstroads.com, you have an opportunity to select a number of issues that tend to bother you. It could be potholes, poor road maintenance, traffic congestion, pedestrian and cycling infrastructure concerns. So we do know that we provide a variety of concerns, and we have the opportunity to, you know, leave comments in that as well. And we take all of that information and that data, and we share it with different levels of government in order to advocate for some of those roads to get the necessary funding.
Nominations can be submitted online until April 18. The top 10 will be revealed in May.
Beginning Sunday, the TTC is improving service in several areas, including 14 bus routes in North York, Etobicoke, and Scarborough. Saturday service at Steels and Weston Road will be boosted to match weekday levels with buses arriving every two minutes. There will also be weekday improvements on McCowen, Finch East, Midland, and Morningside routes. The TTC is also increasing subway service on Line 4, so trains arrive every 5 to 6 minutes. Meanwhile, weekend service will be enhanced on five streetcar routes, including Dundas and Carlton.
I'm extremely proud that as a city, we are making historic investments in the TTC under the leadership of Mayor Chow across our bus, subway, and streetcar networks.
The city will also expand a pilot program designed to reduce bus bunching, which is when there is a long wait between buses, and then several show up all at the same time. 11 routes are included in the pilot, including St. Clair, Victoria Park, and Don Mills. A full list of service changes can be found on the TTC's website.
The Toronto Raptors managed to snap a four-game losing streak in Washington.
Denied on the inside, taken by Scotty. Finds Jakob, the closeout by Thor with the lane. Scotty, what a dime!
Toronto fell behind early but had a strong finish to win 112 to 104. Jakob Pertl had 21 points and 11 rebounds. Emmanuel Quikley had 21 points and 7 assists. They visit Brooklyn tomorrow.
And now Marner was in a quick pass here in the middle, and it's Tavares! He's got another! John Tavares with the icebreaker tonight.
And the Maple Leafs are vying for their fourth win in five games tonight. Toronto lost to Nashville on Saturday, but will try to get back in the win column this evening at home against Philadelphia.
Just ahead, the billboard is tiny, but the scale is massive. Little Canada is offering a big opportunity for companies to promote their brands. We explain.
Tonight, dissecting the Liberals' defense spending pledge.
Rebuild, reinvest, and rearm.
Inspecting a major promise for the military at a time when Canada's closest ally has turned combative. Later, on CTV National News.
And a reminder, the CTV News 6 podcast is available as a download every weeknight. And a special shout-out to those of you listening to the newscast live on NewsTalk 10.
Lady Luck is certainly smiling on a group of coworkers from the GTA.
Three, two, one. $60 million, LaBouba's jackpot.
Growing up, I think there is a perception of Lunar New Year's as always start of something new. So almost a week before Lunar New Year actually started, I was buying creamer for the office. I said, okay, let's grab our ticket here. And who would have known?
The group won that jackpot in a January 21 draw. The coworkers are receiving a $12 million check each. And there are differing plans among the new multimillionaires about what to do with the money, from buying a home, a car, doing some traveling, and retirement.
They can do it all. Patriotic pride is on display every day at Toronto's Little Canada exhibit.
But as a cross-border trade war wages on, a new initiative is showcasing Canadian-owned and operated businesses in a tiny but powerful way. CTV's Jessica Smith has the story.
Proudly Canadian, putting Canada first, one locally-owned business at a time.
We created this opportunity called Mini Media, where we can offer companies to advertise their brands within our little world.
Mini Media is an initiative by Little Canada to support Canadian businesses from coast to coast to coast for free.
Canada has brands that are unique. They tell a unique Canadian story. And this gives the opportunity not only to advertise, but also to tell that story.
Everything, from scenery, from multiculturalism, it's just beautiful.
It's wonderful here. And it's like beautiful when you come here.
There are five Mini Media billboards mixed throughout the 45,000-square-foot Little Canada display. Each month, a different Proudly Canadian business will be featured.
These billboards, these video screens, they're even vehicles. We have vehicles that run on our world with Canadian brands represented.
This month, it's a small business, North Holton Reserve, a family business that makes small-batch maple syrup from Georgetown, Ontario. The Mini Media campaign will remain ongoing and free to Canadian businesses, big and small. And if you want to participate, you can visit little-canada.ca. Jessica Smith, CTV News, Toronto.
And the weather over Little Canada there, a little bit brighter than what we're experiencing at this hour. It's been a gray day.
It has been, and it looks like the start of tomorrow will be a little bit gray as well. We're also watching the satellite and radar for maybe a few flurries, a few rain showers around the area for this evening. Here's one more look. It may look a little more overwhelming than it actually is. This is very light stuff, a lot of it not even touching the ground. Just want to show you the almanac. Remember this day in 2021, our temperature climbed all the way to 22 degrees. That was not the case today. It won't be tomorrow either. Forecast daytime high, 2, that's it. Mostly cloudy skies, but some clearing as we make our way into the evening. Lots of sunshine for your Thursday. It's going to be a very comfortable day. But once again, it looks to be unsettled Friday and through the weekend. Back to some sunshine for the first day of April, though. That's next Tuesday, Nathan and Michelle.
Something to look forward to. Thank you, Lindsay. That's it for us, but you can join Omar Setjadina at 11 tonight for CTV National News, followed by Zarida Almond with your next local newscast at 11:30.
In the meantime, our coverage continues anytime on CP24 and at ctvenewstoronto.ca.
For Lindsay Morrison and the whole team here at CTV News, thanks for watching, and have a great night.